So we're gonna start our study session. We're happy to have Richard Brewster, who was our city auditing firm leader. And he has a lot of expertise to questions that are on board. And I'm not sure exactly what process we're going to take tonight. There are, we can't count, I think, twenty-nine different items, issues, and concerns listed in the paperwork. We take five minutes per issue, we're here for quite a minute. At some point, we're gonna have Richard Brewster come up and address a number of items on here, so let's have a macro perspective on what you see has been doing well and maybe not so well. Um, sure, we can do that, and that makes some sense, I was gonna do that, that's good. Yep. Um, one?
Turn it on. Right.
Well, one point of concern, one point of concern I had was the process. I know staff had asked for information to be given to staff, I think, while, like, a week and a half with vacations, parentless audit. I felt just wasn't enough time for staff to prepare properly, have to answer, give a lot of thought to the questions. The staff is comfortable, I guess, you know, the items came in Thursday, to go ahead and hold the study session. Um, one item that was really concerning to me was that there is a, I don't know how to get it, but there's Jamie McLeod memo back from two thousand seventeen, but there's no information about the rebuttal to the memo. So I thought, I thought, if I had interruptions by the audience, I'll have to have to leave, I don't wanna do that, so we're just gonna let the city council do their business and do our thing, okay? So, there is a report to council on allegations contained in the March, well, this, yeah, the March eighth seventeen memo, and it was in the packet, and I thought, why is that in the packet? Because it's been so discredited, reviewed by Dave Cantor, CIS, our auditor, but I'm just gonna hand out the rebuttal document, which I wanna have in the minutes for the, for the record, and it kinda clarifies that, I think, a lack of prejudice into the system or into the packet. There's one here for Kimberlin, okay? But just, before we call Richard up, and before we, uh, you guys, and before we go into the real study session, you know, Dave Cantor, in the memo that he wrote regarding the McLeod memo, this is on March twentieth, two thousand seventeen, council meeting, he says, "I council approved an employment agreement with him, and I was, he was subsequently asked by the mayor, myself at the time, to investigate the allegations in Ms. McLeod's memo and report back to city council in forty-five days." And he writes that, "My investigation involved a review of personnel files, APAR files, audit reports, best practices report from city county insurance services, interviews with current and former staff, and conversations with city's current and former auditors." And he goes on to state that, "In sum, I have been unable to corroborate the allegations and have found no evidence of malfeasance or criminal activity." Now, for some reasons, it was not in our study session information. I think it really should've been.
Well, I actually brought, I brought some word to the same report.
Yeah, but the next time around, if there's some wild allegations, and there's a report that refutes those allegations, we really need to take that information, put it into the package in order to give a better perspective.
Well, I hadn't seen that until you sent it to me this afternoon, so I thought, oh.
Yeah, but Stuart, I think, had seen it before, so, you know, he wasn't involved in the meeting, but just let me continue, and Dave says that my investigation involved, then the next point, he says, "That in sum, I have been unable to corroborate the allegations and have found no evidence of malfeasance or criminal activity." But there were some crazy accusations of malfeasance, of misappropriation, misappropriate funds, or just like stealing. Those allegations were just kinda hanging out there, and I asked Dave to do a review. By the way, CIS also did a review, our city county insurance agency, our auditor did an investigation also. But Dave went on to, he continues, saying, "I'm unable to find any evidence of malfeasance or misappropriation of funds, and the city's external auditors indicated they were not aware of any such evidence." He said, "I am unable to find evidence to support the other accusations of misappropriation directed to a city staff member." Just two more points he makes. "I reviewed all the city's accounts payable transactions dating back to July first, two thousand sixteen. That review did not provide any evidence of misappropriation. And lastly, city county insurance services conducted a best practices review of city operators, including financial controls. The review gave the city a score of one hundred percent in that area." So I really want this memo to be put into the notes for the meeting minutes, to give some perspective regarding that memo. Okay? Go ahead, Angie.
Uh, on page two and three of that same one, he says, all those findings, that they didn't find anything, but they asked the city auditor to come back and examine, and offer recommendation regarding internal controls and separation of duties as part of the next annual audit. And then the auditor will examine a larger-than-normal sample of APAR transactions to see if the larger sample reveals any irregularities. He then says, "The cost of a payroll audit would cost thirty-eight hundred dollars, so staff recommended not going forward with that, but it did recommend going forward with expanded audit services, but not the payroll audit." So, did those expanded services, did that expanded audit get done, do you know?
We did, we did three, yes, we did three audits. Dave candidate an audit, say yes to an audit, and also our regular auditor expanded their audit.
So they did the expanded audit regarding internal controls and segregation of duties?
Yes, yes. Yep. So this was, this memo was thoroughly vetted, and the accusations fell flat. I just wanted to put that out there. We're going to, not sure how we wanna proceed, but Erin, I'm not sure which staff member you want to come up, but kinda like Angie suggested, have Richard Brewster come up and speak to some of the issues.
Sure.
Richard Brewster's our current auditor, so we get a fourth auditor talking about the situation. And, Richard, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself, and we can chat a little bit. You're in the hot seat, buddy.
That's fine.
He's not our current auditor, but he had in a system, right?
No, I'm Rick Brewster, Richard Brewster, CPA, we've audited the city of town, city of Phoenix, city of Jacksonville. We've done a lot of work for municipalities around the valley. I've been a licensed municipal auditor since nineteen eighty-three, so, a long time. But I was just called to answer some questions, and so that's my focus tonight, try to say, is this normal, what we're seeing? Can you help us navigate what is being showed to us and how to interpret it? Because what I find over the years, historically, there's normally not missing money, there's misinterpretation of facts, you know, so I'm here to help interpret the facts and try to answer those questions. I was provided the same packet, I think, as you, and I had conversations with Kimberlin and Erin, and email with Doug, but it's all over the last few days, you know, so it's this kind of general search to try to be able to answer questions for you tonight.
Thank you.
I'm not the current auditor. I made in my comments to the city, what normally the current auditor has is the current knowledge, skills, and experience of the staff that's now here. We're current members. I have access to the audit report, and I did look at the June thirty-eighteen audit report, I looked at the budget for June thirty-nineteen and June thirty-twenty, and so I've looked at all the numbers. I was provided city financial statements that show budget versus actual for all the departments through June thirty-nineteen. So I think I've looked at enough information, I have a little bit of comfort level. What I would comment is, in the packet, there's an exhibit N, and it just shows, in your exhibit, you've got a certain number of employees, but in most cities, those employees are departmentalized, you know, a lot of the administrative employees are shared, so part of them is charged to different funds. And on that exhibit, it shows that you have about twenty-four full-time equivalent positions in the June thirty-twenty budget. That's about two-point-three million dollars when you add payroll, payroll taxes, and benefits. When I look at your operating costs for your city, after backing out capital outlay, that's fifty-three percent of your budget. So if there were ever something to come up, even questions genuine in personnel costs, so it doesn't surprise me that some of the questions have to do with personnel.
Right.
Okay? So, I'm glad to answer questions, but I just wanted to let you know, my background over the last years is looking at numbers, and my hope tonight is help you figure out what's, you know, the numbers are telling me and interpret it to you.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is it common for raises to be given outside of budget cycle? Is that common?
Yes, it is. To answer your question, in most positions like the city, anybody with administrative skills will wear several hats, like I said before. So the finance director probably is the HR director, but when that person is hired, there's an anniversary date. And then somewhere during that fiscal year, they may get a step or a review based on something changing, either anniversary date, a skill level changing, additional duties, so, yes, it happens.
Is it usually factored into the budget, though, the cost of?
Yes, you guess in the budget, because that's what, it's an educated guess of how much it's going to cost to, you know, for those twenty-three positions. And that includes payroll, payroll taxes, benefits, overtime, but it would include step increases.
Okay. If, if, on the anniversary date, the step increase is supposed to come, and then there's a spare raise and another raise, that is not, that is not abnormal to have three series of raises outside, two outside of budget cycle?
Typically, there's a process, and so that process can include multiple raises based on certain things happening.
Okay. Anything, is this your expertise on checks and balances and segregations of duty?
Yeah, yeah. Everything you do in an audit is analyzing risk, and risk comes from what controls are in place, that if something happened, who would notice it? So, that's what you do in an audit.
Okay, okay.
I gotta get a question on that point, though, if you don't mind. But segregation of duties, I remember Dave Cantor speaking, I went back to listen to Dave Cantor's conversation regarding the Jamie McLeod memo, and he talked about segregation of duties with the city of Ashland. Even the size of the city of Ashland, they don't have enough employees to segregate all the duties, even though they're, what, five times the size that we are. So when it comes to small cities and segregating duties, a lot of times for a small city, it's impossible to segregate all the duties because you don't have enough employees. Certain employees overlap their duties and handle more than one item. And he spoke of the auditors for Ashland, every single year saying, "You need to segregate more duties, you need to segregate more duties." They never did, because they never could. Can you speak to how it's difficult for smaller cities like the city of Phoenix in order to segregate duties? And I'm gonna ask about checks and balances.
Sure. Any process, whether it be the accounting process, somebody billing and collecting money, banking, you know, getting approval for bills and paying those bills and approving payroll and paying the payroll, you know, those are generally the same people. We try to break up the process. One of the ways we do that is add double signatures if we can, double approvals if we can. And you guys are part of that process, because you look at the information every month, and you're analyzing, what did we approve, and why did it, why does it look different? The auditor is part of that process, the employees themselves, you know, some people are very possessive over their budget line items, so they're gonna monitor if something got charged to the budget. So there's controls that we try to put in there, but generally, that's a standard recommendation in all my audits, because all my organizations have too few people doing too many things.
Right. Thank you.
So, in your opinion, would raises come to city council if, first before, if it was a raise given?
We look at process.
Okay.
We're setting policy, they're following policy, administering the city. So I would assume that you would not be involved in personnel decisions. You would assign those duties to management, management follows a certain process to do that. So it generally would not come to.
Before council?
No, but your, your task is, if you look at the monthly financial statements, you're looking at budget, which is generally about one-twelfth of the annual budget, and you're looking at what was spent for that month. And you're looking for a six-month period, are we halfway through our budget, are we in course? The June thirty-nineteen budget versus actual reports I looked at, every department was under overall budget for personnel costs, which tells me somebody had a decent guess or somebody was monitoring that.
Okay.
When it comes to checks and balances, sometimes we, the city's been accused of not having correct checks and balances. And I've explained before, many times, and I'll explain again for the audience and for people listening on Facebook, that here in the city, we have a number of checks and balances when it comes to distributing money and funds. Typically, invoice comes into a department head, department head looks at it, checks it off, see if that's, that's proper. And then that invoice goes to the finance director, and that's another check and balance, and they look at it and go, yep, that looks proper. That item then goes to the city manager, and he looks at it and goes, yeah, that's proper. And then me, or Jim, or the city, the vice president of council, looks at checks, I sign those checks, a lot of times I go, what is this check for? So I'm looking at checks also. So there's four different levels of people signing checks that come into the system, and I know some time ago, in the McLeod memo, it talked about us not having checks and balances. But those are four levels of checks and balances. Can you speak to whether that's good practice, or whether it's normal practice? If that's a.
It's normal practice, when you see an invoice, we're looking for, is it really the city's bill? Is it an accurate amount?
Right.
Is it something that we ordered that was in the budget? You know, and those approval processes that you described are standard, because you want multiple eyes on that transaction to make sure that it is proper for spending public funds.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I started looking into this because Erin had described to me the reasons for raises for both finance director and planning director, and, and talked about an agenda item that had been passed last year by city council, which I believe the exhibit were out of orders. I'm not remembering what exhibit it is, but it showed that council approved a step raise for employees, including the planning commissioner, finance director, and that they should be on the same step raises, both ending in six steps at the same, at the same pay rate. And so on exhibit A, it shows, that was sent to me by Erin and J.C., it shows that the planning director and the finance director both started at seventy-two-five in two thousand seventeen. Now we get to present, and the finance director went from seventy-two-five, actual shows seventy-two-eighty-nine, to eighty-five thousand three sixty, while the planning director stayed maybe at seventy-two-five, really, actual shows sixty-nine-seven-five-eight, and in two years was given a one-thousand-six-hundred-dollar raise, not fair and equitable, when they were both put on the same step agreement.
We looked at that transaction, not to interrupt you, but.
Sure, no, go ahead.
That, that particular schedule that you're referring to, looked like that the raise came sooner because the anniversary date.
Yeah, the anniversary date, but there was also a raise on July eighteen. There's a spare raise that came for finance director but not for planning director. She went from seventy-two-five to seventy-seven on July eighteen, and then she was given, on her anniversary date, another raise to eighty-one, and then January nineteen shows eighty-five. And so there's the anniversary date, and the, and the step raise, and then a spare raise, which Erin explained was five thousand dollars for doing fewer works, so there's, there's actually a third raise in there, in that.
Yeah, I think we generally talked about it, but we didn't talk specifics on the urban renewal, extra duties, and it came into play, and so that was on top of the duties, and that generally merits, return, new responsibility, you know, it's like additional step.
Can I ask a question, just to build off what you were saying? So, under our steps schedule, we have six steps, which in theory are supposed to be given annually.
Yes.
How, let's see, so, does that mean that our finance director is tops out?
No.
Or, and maybe that's a question more for Erin?
No.
I'd have to do the math.
I think she's at step five or six, but that was, by the agenda report on C page one, it says that it has no impact on a future budget, or on this budget, it is only for future, and it's to be done with a cost of living adjustment on January. So, so there's two different dates and numbers going on there, and, and it should not, by this agenda report, it should not affect the current budget, so it should've been rolled into the budget amount.
The budget amount should reflect anticipated steps.
Yes.
Because during the budget process, somebody's looking at the numbers and saying, you know, but the salary will go up at the anniversary date, and it'll go up if something else changes, so it should reflect. In fact, all the other costs of an employee would be reflected, their health insurance increases, workers' comp coverage, you know, all those things would be anticipated and part of that personnel budget.
Okay. And is there usually a five percent payroll cushion built into payroll? Is that, is that safe?
Well, it's, everybody has a different style, but you need a little bit of margin for error. Sometimes it's in overtime, sometimes it's in other costs, sometimes you store in contingency, because the budget law says you have to stay within the broad category or departmental in total. So as long as you stay within the total, you might have a vacancy in position that's covered up by a raise to cover extra duties. As long as you're under, in total, you're fine.
And this, a salaried employee going one-hundred-and-thirteen percent above their, their budgeted pay, that's normal for a salaried employee, for one who doesn't get any extra?
Normally, salary has the steps, and you don't see a lot of extra other than the salary plus steps.
Just clarify, it's not one-hundred-and-thirteen percent, it's thirteen percent above.
I guess, yeah, sorry, yes, thirteen percent. Yes, that would be really, yeah.
And I just wanna say, the steps, this process of having steps for nonboarding union employees was a concept put in play by a former city manager, Dave Cantor, and it was approved by the city council. I wasn't real happy about doing that, I preferred the contracts that we currently had, but the system had changed, and going to steps did increase the cost of, the cost of the city.
Erin, is that, is that step guaranteed, or is that a maximum at the next raise?
It's basically guaranteed.
Okay.
It's at my discretion.
Okay.
Okay.
In, in, in the finance director, HR director's contract and job description, it does say, she'll work forty-hour week. If it goes over, she's paid no extra for that, and, and will accomplish everything that needs to be done for her position, even if it exceeds forty hours a week, but is expected to be there forty hours a week. Also wondered, maybe this one's for Erin, is there a admin pay set aside for, for all directors to attend city council meetings?
Admin time?
Yeah, is there a pay for it?
There's an additional amount as a benefit, if that's what you mean.
Okay, and I see.
It's part of their forty hours. Do they get comp timing?
They get admin.
Extended on top of it. And her contract, finance director, HR director is supposed to be here and concurring city council meetings as well, so I know that hasn't been done.
I just wanna stop proceeding just for a moment, and just let city council know that, if you guys have a question that might be on the edge, what we should be talking about, like performance of an employee, which we should not be discussing, if you have a question, I'm willing to stop the meeting, say, I just need a minute to do a sidebar with our attorney.
Okay.
And Doug, I'm sure you're on it right now, and if we're straying and going into errors we shouldn't be going into, please let us know. What we don't wanna do is talk about performance items that we shouldn't be talking about in open session, but the performance of an employee.
Yes, I was concerned about that.
It can be done during executive session.
Okay.
Okay, so just to be careful, and if you think you might be straying, we can stop the meeting just for a minute.
Yeah, and I would be glad to have that stopped.
Let me just address that, that I, my general overview with the comments had to do with HR issues, budget and transfer issues, reporting issues, accuracy issues, but, you know, that's kind of the framework, so I didn't wanna just send you down the wrong road if you had questions on different categories.
I, yes, and I, and that was kind of underpaid, that I was looking under that for budget issues. I, there's a series of questions and where to go on that, but I did wanna ask you a couple things, and maybe I need to ask staff those first. Yeah. And speaking about a, a balance transfer that didn't happen, that was approved by budget, is that, is, is that problematic? Does it need to come before council, or is that not a problem about that?
Great question. In your budget, your budget anticipates needs in different funds, and you authorize the transfer to cover those needs. Occasionally, in your budget, you realize, we're not gonna get that project done this year, I don't need to transfer the money this year. It sounds like what happened here is, we authorized a two-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer, we didn't need two-hundred thousand, so we only transferred fifty. You know, so that's very common for, don't shift the money unless you need to. You can always re-budget it next year, when the project may happen, if your project focus changes. Don't transfer the money until you know where you really need the money. It's harder to move it back to where, where you're going to need it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That answer that?
Yes, yes.
There's one item in the packet that talks about governing law, and it's exhibit Q, it talks about United States government law of eighteen U.S.C., and then we have the Oregon statutes listed. I mean, I, I'm not sure why, I'm not sure where that was going, but when we're dealing with budgeting issues here in the state of Oregon, our governing authority is Oregon statutes.
Or your local budget law.
Right, it's not gonna be U.S. statutes, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
I only grabbed that one because per contract, under Erin's contract, and, and maybe finance director, HR director's contract says that it will, will follow the law concerning all things, federal, state, and local, and so.
Okay, yeah, but I just wanna clarify, when it comes to our budgeting process, we're ruled and governed by Oregon statutes, not U.S. statutes.
Yeah, occasionally, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Occasionally, if the source of your funds is Fed funds, they have Fed requirements for those Fed funds.
Okay.
You know, so it may be something that has to do with follow the money all the way through, follow all the rules from the Fed. But most of your budgetary laws that you have to follow is local budget law, Oregon.
Oregon, thank you.
Okay.
Richard, I have a question.
Oh, yes, please.
Um, no, thank you for all the, the work that you've done and the research, and I think this is important. And I wanna start directing some questions towards staff, because I think it's less of a, some of these questions are not, if we can, per se, and if.
I wouldn't know.
Catch in an audit, right? But why? And I think that that's some of what we're trying to get at, and Angie and Stuart have done a really good job of lining up some questions. And I think, so, so one of the questions that Angie put down here that kinda captured my eye, and I wanted to ask you, Erin, and I think about, well, why and where's this coming from, so.
What number?
So, I'm getting to that. So question two, and whatever, letter C, two C. So, so we're talking about some of the, the line items that we're seeing exceeding the line item in the budget, right? And in this case, Angie highlighted something that's like pretty substantial, over seven thousand dollars. So where is that money being pulled from? So if we didn't budget, that money in raises that we're talking about for the financial director's position, where, where is that money being drawn from?
I think that's a really good question. It, it was, I think, somewhat answered by Mr. Brewster. That money is in the budget, and it is in personnel, and if you look at those personnel costs in every fund, we're under budgeted. So we're able to make those expenditures and still be under budget. So that money is in the exact same place as you saw it in the budget. It's, it's a budgeted amount, a total, and, you know, just like in any other, I guess, department, or, or materials and services, or, or personnel costs, or something like that, you're really budgeting for that total, you know, that.
Sure.
Whatever that total amount is, you know, say it's four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, let's say.
Sure.
A one-thousand-dollar or a five-thousand-dollar difference between lines isn't where you budget in the grand scheme of things, and so it's still there, you know? For example, Ray left, right? We didn't have to, well, we have that money, it's still in the, in the budget, right? His salary is in the budget, even though he's not here. We don't have to necessarily create a new budget document, and we could've hired a replacement, for example, which we did, you know, effective July first. And so what was in the budget originally was Ray's original salary. What we're actually gonna spend is superintendent's salary. So I hope I'm answering your question. It's, it's in the same place it always was.
So just to clarify, so we're. So just to clarify, so we're looking at overall budgets for a different, in this case like personnel. And even though we overspent in one line item in a personnel category, we were still within our overall budget, our overall budget.
Spending costs were less than.
Because we had staff leave and things like that. So that didn't put us over in the overall category.
Correct. So, so do you answer it another way? Local budget asks, says stay within the broad category, personnel services, broad category.
You can move stuff.
Everything within there is personnel costs.
Yeah.
And Richard, if we go over by a certain percentage, we do have to come back to the Budget Committee back in council. I think fifteen percent.
I don't know that your subject's line by line at all, as long as you're in total. For example, in this budget, you, you described, we're paying one position that's in a different line item that might have been originally budgeted, as long as it's within the total and we got the job done. That's really what mattered.
But, but the council has to over his point, if we are way over budget by a certain percentage, then we do have to come back to city council and explain why and pass a different budget.
Not, not as long as we're within the broad category, personnel.
But if we're outside of that, if we are over by some percentage in that broad category-
If the general fund or if the street fund or if the water fund goes over by, I think it's fifteen percent, you need to come back to council.
Generally you'll have a contingency and that contingency allows you to move money. Generally you'll have, you know, an overage in personnel and under in materials and services. You're allowed to move between broad categories with a resolution. That's not increasing your spending authority, it's just changing it.
But if I can't, if we did overspend, we do have to come back to council, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, and just another follow-up question, so, and I don't know if this was in there. I wish I had the, the full budget in front of me, that would be helpful for this conversation if it continues. We should make sure we have this. I'm sure Angie is your big stack of stuff. So were those step increases anticipated in this budget year? Did we have included in that overall category or within the line item for each staff, the step increases that we gave during this year?
Yes, I mean, we came in under budget. If we're talking about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
During this current year, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we came in under budget for that. But then there was an additional raise that was outside of that, those step increases for the finance director.
And you're still under budget?
Still under budget, including those raises.
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, I just want to follow up on that and ask if that is- Attending League of Organ Cities training and talking about keeping everything fair and equitable and that the planning director and the finance director are on the same pay scale, then how is it that the finance director is seven thousand dollars over her budgeted amount and the planning director is five thousand below his? There seems to be some inequity in how raises were handed out.
There, there is, and there's some inequity in job duties, functions and skills. So as an example, the city bills Fiera for, for time. And as an example, in twenty eighteen, the finance director had two hundred and fifteen billable hours to Fiera. The public works director had a hundred and eighty-two. The planning director's not listed on here. That's just kind of a little bit beside the point. It's to, it's to show that she does a significant amount of work related to Fiera. But also, the skillset is different. And I, I thought this was explained earlier and I apologize if it wasn't, I thought it was explained at a previous meeting. Fiera's in a different software system, accounting software system. It's on a different basis of accounting, or it was, has a separate audit. And also there's a separate bank for Fiera, it's different than the city's. So there's a completely separate part-time job, if you will, for that. And so the city administrator or city manager is authorized to, authorize an, an amount of money to pay for those additional duties and skills. Whereas the planning director, since, since you brought that position up as a comparable, does not have routine functions related to Fiera.
When, Erin, when you spoke to me about giving the raise to the finance director for Fiera, you told me that, that we had farmed that out to, to another entity and it cost us a lot of money and that by paying Jeanette the five thousand dollars to do Fiera, that we were saving a ton of money by not farming that out to others. But I see that it, who it was farmed out to was Steve Weber and it was, I believe, the most he was paid when we had a Fiera office, when we had, when we had all of the busyness of Fiera that doesn't exist now. He was paid forty-one hundred and he had to do it outside of his forty-hour work week. And then he was instructed by the next city manager to include it in his forty-hour work week and it did not make him go over forty hours and he was not paid any extra for that, for that service.
Well, I don't know anything about how many hours he put in or what the previous city manager told him. I'm privy to that and I don't know where that document is. But that's very similar to the amount that J.C. is being paid for that.
But you told me that we were saving a ton of money by giving her that. You told me that maybe you shouldn't have given her a five thousand dollar raise, but you did because it was saving a ton of money.
To go back to the annual statement for Fiera, Fiera was, last year was paying twenty-eight thousand dollars to the city for work that city staff was doing. Eleven thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents of that was for finance and eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars was public works. And, I mean, I can go down the, the list, but finance-
That was paid by the, by the city to do the work?
What's that?
That was paid by the city to do the work?
Paid to.
No, that was paid by Fiera to the city to reimburse the city for what it's done. So, so if you were to look at the number of billable hours that the city had for Fiera, there is a significant amount of money that Fiera was paying for services that you could, you could assume someone, if it wasn't a, a city staff person, would have to do.
Does public works get paid anything out of that? You, you mentioned those other entities, do they get paid out of Fiera?
Do you mean an individual employee or?
Yes, yeah, like the finance director would be.
The public works director did not. He was the highest paid employee in the city, higher paid than the city manager. And he was paid to do some, I should put it that way. His salary was based on a level of skill or knowledge that didn't appear to be used. And so, no, he was not offered an additional amount. He was already above the steps as, as-
Yeah, he was one of the highest. What other, what other city services, what other city employees worked towards Fiera? Was it just, was it just, what other city employees worked towards Fiera? Is it just finance and?
No, no. No, it's finance director, public works director, utility workers, lead utility worker. Those are all less than five hundred dollars for those positions. I'm sorry, there is one utility worker that's at a thousand and then the city recorder is thirty-four hundred.
Is that, does that, is there paperwork on that? Does that get billed to Fiera? Is that just paid by the city? How does that?
That's a bill from Fiera to the city.
Okay.
The other way around, isn't it?
Yes. Anybody else have any?
I have just a question about the holiday pay. How does, how do we factor the holiday pay in the budget? What factors would make it go under, what factors make it go over?
It's, it's based on the number of holidays we have and it's based on payroll, the number of employees and their, and their pay rate. It's basically an amount, it's not a cash out, if, because there was some confusion as to whether it was, that's why I'm bringing that up. It's just tracked, kind of like, you know, social security might be tracked as a separate line. Holiday pay, because it's separate in our finance software, we budget it separate.
I, I think what I've seen elsewhere, if you're scheduled for twenty-two days this month and one of them is a holiday, that day would be segregated and charged to a different line item than the rest of your pay.
And there's one day, thinking about Christmas time or New Year's, I'm not sure. We, we did take one day and we said staff can take that day off. It was approved by city council. It was maybe a Friday before, all right, there's a certain day. Would, would that day now go from regular salary to holiday? It did, okay, that might be part of the discrepancy also. Now the approval by city council.
Yeah, I didn't know all that information when I did because I think that would be hard for, for residents who pay that extra fee to be okay with that, although I should have known that. On, on question two-
It's really part of the annual salary.
What's that?
It's just breaking down part of the annual salary to a different line.
Right, it's not an additional.
It's not an additional.
So salary going over a, or holiday pay going over a percentage of it?
It just says during the year you're going to have seven to ten holidays that you're going to be paid for that are part of your salary and you won't have to work them. They're just segregating part of that salary.
So it's, so it's all put in that one, so it doesn't?
Yeah, it's not adding to the number.
Okay.
If a person gets paid seventy thousand dollars, they got to get seventy thousand dollars earned.
I see that, okay, so you learned something.
Good question though.
Yeah. On question two F, in, in one budget document to another budget document, exhibit B and D, it shows the, the planning director's salary under the approved budget. On, on B, page one, it has the, the planning director at forty-nine, three. But on D, schedule D, it shows that the approved budget for the planning director's salary is fifty-four thousand, but transposed onto the revenue expense report was taken down by five thousand dollars for the planning director's salary. Is that normal?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that question. Exhibit D is when your local budget forms.
Okay.
Exhibit B is your internally generated budget versus actual financial statements.
Okay.
Exhibit D is what you presented to the public. This is what we anticipate spending sometime between budget adoption and the end of your fiscal year. You made some resolutions to move some spending authority between line items. You actually decreased the top two positions by five thousand dollars apiece.
Okay.
So that's why the budget in B is lower than the budget in D, because I asked the same question.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Sure.
Sorry, I was having trouble.
The, the sheet that's labeled D is your local budget law, budget forms that shows your spending line by line. And your B is your monthly financial statements that you see. But it shows between D, the adoption at the public hearing of the spending expected, and E, which is the end of your fiscal year for that same year, is you remove some spending authority out of some line item and moved it someplace else. So you made some resolutions to modify the budget during the year. That included a five thousand dollar reduction in those two salaries. And I asked the same question, why did it change?
Okay.
And just follow up, that was a resolution that this council passed in June, I believe it was, so a couple of months ago.
Do you remember what it was regarding?
At the end of the year, we kind of do a general cleanup of funds.
Yeah.
And it was part of that. It was where we weren't going to need, need to spend that, so we had a resolution to.
Okay.
Just make sure when you look at cost of an employee, you look in the different funds. So for Evan, you're going to find his expenses in building and planning. For finance director, might be administrative finance and I'm not sure what other funds, add up those two funds.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I am looking for more questions if anybody else has a question.
Anybody else?
I got a question. So you have the, the same packet we've had for a couple of days now. Have you seen any kind of discrepancies, anything that would be alarming or anything that?
No, in, in most budgets, there's human error. And so you may have transposed a number or, you know, changed the number from an LB form to inputting it in your software. So, you know, you could have that in there. But what I try to look at is just in total, is it close to the number we approved? Both in spending authority and actual spending, you know, are we close? And what I found, at least looking at the June thirty-nineteen year, is we're close to what you expected and it's close to what I see from the unpublished budget. So I didn't see anything we outlined?
This one may be for staff or, or maybe for you, Richard. On schedule E, page one, under admin assistant city and then new person admin staff, there, I don't know if that is the same person, if it changed, that, is the code that identifies each person, does that usually stay the same for each employee? Does that move?
I can answer that question again. Is normally you would charge it to the same line item that you budgeted it to. So in your question, the line one, 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 two, administrative assistant for the city is where it was budgeted and it was charged to one, 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 three. The total is almost identical.
Yeah.
And you'll find the same thing up above that on one, one, oh, four and one, one, oh, three, where the budget was all in one lump and the actual split of positions was in two.
So it's just a clerical thing?
Yeah, it's a clerical thing, but it may be to better track personnel.
Okay. I also, on, I think exhibit B, page two, there is, and this one might be for staff, under one code has assistant planner, twenty-three thousand, budgeted. That is zeroed out and then a new code changed by one digit goes to building planning aid and seems to be paid under there. Why would, why would that one switch?
Under assistant planner versus building planning aid?
B, page two.
But are you talking about line like one, one?
Uh, one, 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 four, six point oh and one, one, four, seven point oh, where assistant planner looks like he was changed from assistant planner to building planning aid?
That was just another, same thing that was on the other page.
Was it about his title?
There wasn't actually a change in the title. It was that it's just the budgeted amount is put in one line and the pay amount is put in the, the next line under.
So if you look at the budget balance in the right-hand column, one offsets the other.
Yeah, and so if you look at the, and then if you, the same is on the other page, if you look at the budget versus the actual.
Yeah, he's assistant planner on the other one. Is there, was there a reason for the title change? From assistant planner?
There was no title change.
To building and planning aid?
No.
So he is assistant planner?
He is the building, planning aid.
And assistant planner?
There is no combined position. It's building, planning aid.
Except for it's listed in several documents that it's assistant planner until that's switched. So I was just wondering about that.
If you go back, and if you go back to the original hire, that person has been referred to a number, a number of different ways, but he was hired as a building, planning aid. And all of our positions that are contracted positions have to be consistent with the collective bargaining agreement. If they're not, they have to be approved by the, the union. And so we only have certain positions and they're the ones that are approved between the city and the union. And regardless of what you call someone, you know, whatever you want to call them as, you know, representative of what they do, their, their official position is whatever's in the collective bargaining agreement.
And this other document that was sent also calls him assistant planner, permit tech.
Yeah, there's a lot of communication that has him listed in multiple different ways. And in fact, the agenda report when he was hired has three different positions posted. I mean, listed. It has assistant planner, it has building, planning aid, it has permit tech. But not all of those are even positions that are in the collective bargaining agreement. And to be perfectly frank, that is, I guess it would go back to human error and the person or persons that have referred to that position in that way have been reminded that we are to refer to our positions as those that have been approved by both the city and the union.
So his business card that was just there at the city is wrong, printed wrong?
If it says anything other than building, planning aid, it is incorrect.
You must know that it says assistant planner, because that's his business card.
Trying to be really, really clear. His position is building, planning aid and always has been. His offer, stated building, planning aid, he accepted that position. His offer stated building planning aide, he accepted that position. I don't know how more plainly to put it.
It was just listed, listed wrong on all of the reports and on his title?
Anytime it's referred to anything other than building planning aide, it's incorrect.
So when the financials through it, it is incorrect?
I don't know how to answer that question anymore directly.
Okay, I was just checking.
Can I ask if you've been, your picture question?
What's that?
Can I ask if you've been, your picture question?
Sure.
So in the current budget year that we're in right now, so are we substantially going over any of our overall budget categories? Are we overspending in any of the big categories?
As of July first?
As of, yeah, as of right now, are we overspending correctly? Are we overspend in any, over budget in any of our primary budget categories?
I don't believe we are. No, I'm sure we're not.
Are those numbers available, the actuals from July to present?
The actuals are not. Not, not the report, I should say, is not. We do have the actuals that are pulled a different way and you guys are getting monthly reports, so you should be able to see what the actuals are.
Great.
Or the finance report.
That's really helpful.
That, that's been coming out since, I think it was July.
Okay. So, so that's really helpful to know, so that moving into next year, we're not creating a budget because we overspent in any specific category, right?
Right. And, and one of the things to, I think, remember is that we were always operating within the constraints of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
We just weren't budgeting as conservatively, I guess, or as we are now. You're more aware of the expenditures versus the revenues and how they relate to each other, I think, than you probably were in the past.
And that's helpful to have those reports, like that's something that we'll definitely be needing as the council moves forward.
Mr. Brewster, I have another question. Do you, a shortfall, you've seen the current, the last, the current budget that, that projected that shortfall that we had. Is that, is that something that you should be able to see coming a long ways out or something that would surprise you a few months away?
Well, I think, I think you should be able to see it coming. One of your resources is beginning working capital. That's your carryover. One of your spending is how much money are we going to carry over to next year? So if you remove those, you look at new resources and new expenses. You've been budgeting for years to spend some of that carryover. I mean, why is it a surprise that we actually did what we budgeted to do, that we budgeted some of it and actually did spend it, so our carryover went down? We didn't spend money that wasn't appropriate.
Right.
We spent money on projects that you had anticipated doing.
But should have been, should it have been noticed months before? Is it something you should see trending as it gets close instead of an emergency base?
Yeah, I think, I think as you watch that for the last three years go down, 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 you need to go to a certain level because you need a certain amount of working capital to pay the city's bills. Most of what you're concentrating in the general fund, the general fund does all the administrative operations. A lot of the funds have specific uses and can only be spent for water, streets, or whatever else. So, you know, the one that's important to me is the one that pays the rest of the bills. You know, so keeping, you know, three to six months and operating cash to pay the general bills is what most cities want to do.
Okay.
And if I could kind of speak to that question because I know that, I wasn't here at the time, but in June of last year, Dave Cantor had a staff report that, that did state that the city would need to identify a new revenue source in order to sustain the current level of general fund services. So I think that staff in the past was trying to do that. And again, I wasn't here at the time, but looking back at some of the previous city managers' statements, it appears that at least at some point, he was trying to give a heads up to the council.
See, that confuses me because we were told about until February, right?
Well, this was, this was June eighteen of twenty-eighteen, so just a little over a year ago.
Right, that's my point.
He, he did make that statement to the council.
Right, okay.
So.
It never came up again until we got here. We were told at that time that we didn't know anything about it until February.
In your budget though.
You did, I did.
In your budget for nineteen-twenty, if we look at general fund, your budget was to begin with nine-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand and end with five-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. So that tells me you planned in your budget to spend down that. Your total spending in the general fund was three million dollars. You know, if you want a third of the year, you need a million dollars in hand. At five-hundred-thousand, you've got a month and a half. That's a little skinny, so. But that's what the budget.
It's a little, just concerning to me that maybe a year, year and a half ago, I, we heard from a former city manager at the interim that our budgets were wonderful, that our ending fund balances were really high, and that we need to spend some of those ending fund balances instead of using for savings. You need to spend that money for providing citizen services. And I was sitting there going, wait a minute. And good ending fund balance, good, strong ending fund balances are a good thing. We've had those the past three years. And all of a sudden, I'm being told that ending fund balances need to be spent down. Just rip slags them off of my head when I talk to Dave, but I think that was one of the problems that we had. We just changed our philosophy from being really conservative by not spending down our ending fund balance to saying, hey, our balance is just strong, let's spend it.
I mean, Dave said two things, so to clarify, and this is partially one that speaks to a few issues. One is constant staff transition in Phoenix, and that makes things very difficult. That makes institutional memory very difficult. That makes long-range planning very difficult. We went through, since the time that Dave said that, what, was that before? I guess that was the second time he came back.
Yep.
So, so he said two things. One is that we shouldn't just have like a big pot of money that we're sitting on and not spending, but then according to the minutes here, from the time that he came back most recently, he also said we really need to raise revenue. And I don't think those are two disparate ideas. I think that he did tell the council, we might not have done what we needed to as a council to address that, but it also certainly should have been transitioned to staff. Because at the end of the day, staff are the, the folks who make sure that budgets get drafted and that long-term planning does happen because many staff are going to help us, us, the city councils. So I think there, like if, if people are looking for places to put blame, like there's plenty to go around. I think, you know, council missed some steps. I think that heavy staff transition has like definitely made, had an impact. But at the end of the day, the, the revenue issue would have remained the same.
That's right.
We needed to raise revenue in Phoenix a long time ago. Dave flagged it, the council brought the ball on that. It should have been transitioned to Aaron. It probably wasn't, but might have been. But certainly we should have had some staffing at some level who reminded and said, oh, actually we need to move this forward and made sure that we weren't talking about, I think part of the frustration both for the council and for the, the general public is that we had a very rushed budget conversation about raising revenue. And that didn't give us time that we needed to have like a conversation with the community about it or to, to talk about it thoroughly. It doesn't change forever. It needs to happen at some point or the city will cease to function, or we would need to fire police officers. So that's really up to the folks. But it felt really bad to a lot of us in the room because it was a really rushed conversation when we should have been talking about it a year ago, maybe two years, maybe three years ago. So I think that's part of the issue, and I just wanted to lay that out.
Speaking of that, I did want to state, as I asked how we got into this shortfall, I was told, we were told in February that that was discovered, a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar shortfall. And when I asked further, the finance director told me that we were five thousand dollars upside down last year. Five, yeah, the statement from the minutes, from the budget meeting, May fifteenth, when I asked how did we get, if we were on budget last year, how did we get to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? The finance director said, we in fact were not on budget last year. If you compare the two, we were over five hundred thousand upside down, so we're actually going in the right direction. And so then I wondered, did we know in February? Did we know last year? Were we five hundred thousand dollars upside down the year prior? Was that an actual statement? Do you know that, Aaron?
What was the question?
I was told by the finance director that we were, when I asked how we got to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, when we had it on budget last year, and she said we were not in fact on budget last year. We were five hundred thousand upside down, so we're actually going in the right direction, was the quote from the budget meeting. So were we five hundred thousand dollars upside down in the budget the prior year?
Roughly, roughly revenue and expenditures were, expenditures were budgeted to exceed revenues by, five hundred thousand is rounding it, and we were immediately making some, some changes. So as an example, we had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer for a police department that we weren't, we knew we weren't going to build. So we didn't transfer that one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to a different fund that had a positive impact on our general fund balance?
Yes, which was that climbing out, that mention of climbing out.
Right, but yeah, so what I'm trying to point out is that, yes, we did. And so, and I kind of explained this to the council a few months ago, this was a process. So when we knew that there was an issue, it was roughly five hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, it was a little less than that in fact, but we were able to get to roughly one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars less, which would have been three-hundred-and-fifty upside down. And then we continued to make some additional changes, personnel changes mostly because that had the biggest impact. And to go back to the very beginning of this conversation, that in our general fund, I think Mr. Brewster said it was, you know, over fifty percent of our, our general fund budget, something to that effect. So that was where we could make the biggest impact. So yes, we were four-hundred-and-something-thousand dollars upside down budgetary in the general fund. It was a, it was the way the budget was written. And so we decided not to spend that.
So it was a year prior that we knew that there was a half-a-million-dollar shortfall?
Correct. I'm sorry.
It was a half, it was a year prior that they knew, that we knew there was a half-a-million-dollar shortfall?
It was budgeted that way.
Yeah, let me address that. On the June thirty-eighteen audit, for the general fund, your budget was to spend four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars more than you received. You anticipated reducing the, the carryover from a million dollars to five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. That didn't happen during that year. Budget is a guess. Actual, we actually took in two million dollars and spent thirteen thousand less than that. So you actually had a, a positive performance for the general fund for the unit of June thirty-eighteen.
Okay, okay.
So the reminder is, budget is a tool. It's a guess at what it should cost. Actual is what matters.
Okay.
You know, so having actual carryover is what matters, not budgeted carryovers. The two should somewhat be close, but your four- or five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit was built into your budget. You just stopped spending and you made sure it didn't go to the four-hundred-thousand dollars, I think.
We did our best to mitigate that budget shortfall, and it was a budget shortfall, not an actual spending shortfall. We did our best to mitigate that, minimize it if you will.
Which is really confusing.
It, it is, it is. There's so much to go through, and I know that we talked about a less than five-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall, and then we were three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but by the, the revenue and expense report for capital projects for transfers in and out, it was budgeted to transfer two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We only transferred fifty thousand, so it must have been two-hundred-thousand dollars that was added to the budget.
Maybe that's correct. I was thinking from, I thought it was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer from the general fund, but there may have also been a fifty-thousand-dollar transfer from another fund, but I, I don't have the document in front of me, so if, if you do.
I guess the statement I have a problem with is saying that we're going in the right direction. I don't know that taking from one fund makes us go in the right direction for the budget.
I, I guess I would disagree. I think we did a really good job in minimizing that impact to the general fund and we're, we're moving in the right direction.
I, I have, have been told that it is problematic that we had been, had waited so long to tell us about the shortfall from February on, that that is highly problematic, that it is not a right thing to do to hold that information. In fact, your, your city manager review says that you keep, you will keep council informed of all times about revenue expenditures, actual and projected, and there's an expectation that you control expenditures with that.
Yeah, it sounds like you're talking about something that was said in executive session.
Okay.
And I would just comment, if you're giving the financial statements and you need help knowing what, what they're saying, then you should bring help in because I think you're given enough information to know if it's going in the right direction or not.
Okay, okay.
You know, I, I too wanted to see the information sooner than later, and there was a rationale as to why it wasn't made public in the very beginning. It sort of had to do with negotiations with bargaining union employees or something with the, with the union, and you couldn't go public because you, I forget the exact reason, but Aaron, you could, you said to me at one point, it made some sense. Why don't you explain why again, that we waited from February until May in order to disclose the shortfall?
Well, first I'd like to say, I don't know that it was February, but we'll, we can go with that, but I don't know that we knew what the shortfall was in February rather than March or some, or April or whatever, whatever it is. But to answer your question, the biggest impact we could make to the general fund was in personnel costs because most of the materials and services costs were fixed. Personnel costs are theoretically fixed, but you can eliminate positions, you can change hours, you can do things like that. So the biggest impact we could make was in personnel. Personnel has a lot of other issues that are related to that, and especially with bargained employees. So we needed to contact CIS, which is our insurance carrier, and Local Government Personnel Institute, LGPI, who we consult with relative to personnel issues. And we had to have some discussions with the union representative as well. Each one of those conversations is tied and they take time. You talk to one person and you carry that conversation to the next person, you then have to contact your insurance carrier, for example. So it's not as simple as I was sitting behind the desk and I decided this was going to be the answer and I pushed the button and that, that's it. It's a process, and, and that's something that I tried to, to state more than once. It's a process. So whether we knew in February or we knew in March, we were able to bring that information to the council when we did and feel comfortable that we had addressed all of the personnel issues that might come back or might be bigger issues had we just gone to the council and said, here's the problem, we don't know what we're going to do to fix it, and now we start working on it. So that's, that's basically what it boiled down to.
I have a question. In your, in the exhibit O, page one, you wrote to the Budget Committee, City Council, and citizens of Phoenix in our party, I am pleased to present you with the budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Can I just look at the highlighted part?
Yeah.
Where you wrote, you know, I'm just going to ask what you meant by, the city of Phoenix continues to maintain positive, positive fiscal condition. Both revenues and expenditures are conservatively stated in the budget. I'm just, you know, what did you mean by that? Because we obviously were.
In the general fund. We needed to make changes in the general fund. When this was written, I didn't necessarily know all of those changes or how they would be impacted, but the city is in a good fiscal condition. There, we're not in a, we're not in a poor fiscal condition at all.
That, that smacks a lot different than having the jack taxes.
Well, it, it's a true statement, and, and what we needed to do, and this is something that budgets years past were budgets that had expenditures that exceeded revenues. And as we moved forward and I became the city manager here and it was addressed, we began addressing those things. But I can't speak to the budgets that were created and adopted prior to me. But going forward, and, and I guess what I can say is, even those prior budgets. But going forward, and, and I guess what I can say is, even those prior budgets, they were still balanced, if you will. You know, they, they were still, you didn't exceed your spending authority, you just budgeted a different way, and it's a different philosophy. When, when I came on board, I decided that I wanted to present things a little more conservatively, and maybe have a higher cash carryover, or not spend down the carryover as, as much. So, that's not an inaccurate statement. And the city is in good, I think if you look at the audits, you'll see that. We haven't had a, a bad audit.
I'm not, I'm not disputing the audits. I'm not disputing the Cantor's finding. I'm just saying, whatever it is, just on its face.
I'm sorry, I lost you there.
Sorry.
Voice recognition.
So, we can disagree, you know, and...
Yeah, we don't have to agree, I just had to ask you about it.
Sure.
Richard, I, I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, one thing that raised a red flag was some of the verbiage that we used in item number six, and it's on page 115. Well, item number 16 is entitled unauthorized movement of funds. Can you speak to whether it was in fact an unauthorized movement of funds, and whether it, then it says, this is a violation of public funds law?
I think, I think the, it's described incorrectly. I think it really meant to say, you know, we had the authority to transfer, to move the funds, we just didn't. So, it's an authorized transfer that didn't happen.
It says, council may...
Council may move up to that amount from one fund to another. If you don't, it's not a violation.
Yeah, but it wasn't a violation of public law.
It goes back to my comment at the beginning, it said, we can move it if we do it, and if we don't, we can move it.
Right. So, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that it was not in fact a violation of law, it wasn't an unauthorized movement of funds.
Because the movement never happened.
Thank you.
Okay. On the shortfall, and not telling us from February to, or March till May, up against that budget wall, I would, I would hope that if that happens again in the future, you'd bring it to council first. Council is the governing body that should know that information, even if you say we're working on it. I think that should have been brought to council when it was found out.
We talked about that in my performance evaluation.
Can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
We talked about that in my performance evaluation.
Okay. But, but you state that it was a good decision, maybe, maybe it's a different decision needs to be made next time.
Right.
Any, any of the counselors, I know Angie does a ton of questions, I appreciate all our work.
Yeah, no, I'm glad to, you know.
But I think she may want to break, and if anyone else wants to ask a question or two, so you were part of the week in this document, so do you have questions?
So, I didn't like this document, just so you're aware. I did look over it, and I'll tell you what it about, but just so we're clear on this. Okay, good. Most of my questions are on HR stuff, so, you know, I feel like you've been kind of fine, or focusing on the financial stuff, so when ready to switch over there, I don't know if it makes sense just to jump in on that stuff.
Yes.
I think, then we can do, give Angie a little bit of a break.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So, and HR, of course, is a touchy subject, you gotta be careful what we're talking about, so to get a question, they want to run by Doug first, you know.
And he redacted parts of that, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concerns are, through the community, I'm hearing these rumors of a relationship within City Hall, and I'm just wondering what, how, what and how HR deals with those things. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, right? I'm just concerned, because I've heard some negative comments about certain staff members feeling uneasy about it. And so, I'd just like to know kind of like how HR approaches that, and, you know, where people can go to talk about those sort of things.
Yeah, well, I think that's a valid question. We address relationships in our personnel manual, and hopefully council got a copy of that. And then I think also our city attorney can address any, and I think he has addressed some questions related to that. I'm not sure if there's anything else specific that hasn't been answered either by the personnel manual or the city attorney. I don't know. If you have a specific question, um...
Sure, I mean, I can get more specific, if you guess. Has there been any, has there been any concerns raised with either the HR department or the city manager?
Not that I'm aware of.
From staff?
Not that I'm aware of.
Great. Thanks.
Sure.
And if there's staff members appropriate or very relationships in the office, you really got to direct them to HR, to our attorney, to, uh...
I would advise that they go to the HR director, and if they don't feel like they've gotten a good answer there, then they contact the city attorney.
So, hopefully there's no one on staff going to the public and saying there's a relationship going, and spreading rumors. Is that what you just, mind-boggling?
I want to plug in a video, and I think that there's some of this that we're going over, and we're finding that, you know, by asking questions, we're finding that, oh, we're actually within the scope of the budget, there wasn't the kind of overspending that we thought there was, there, you know, because within line items, there may have been, like, oh, why did this go up so much, but it balanced out in the overall budget. I think we're also, through the questions, understanding that the budget isn't what caused necessarily the shortfall, other than perhaps spending down the carryover, which was perhaps not advisable, but that didn't happen under the city manager that was, you know, before, before we had that time. But I think there's other questions about, like, when this issue came to us and things like that, and with all due respect to everyone, I think if we want to have that conversation, we need to have an executive session. And so, at this point, I just want to float that idea, and see if that's the direction we're headed, so that folks can ask those questions that they want to ask, but that's, I don't think you feel like that's an appropriate thing to do right now.
I think that's a safer environment to do that, and a safer session.
Yeah, we can have an executive session to discuss the performance of an employee, but those aren't things that we should be talking about during this meeting.
Absolutely right. So, we're not going to talk about the performance of any employee at this meeting, and that needs to be done in the executive session.
So, and I just, I'm floating out this idea, like, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of what I've been listening and making sure we don't drift into performance evaluation. I did make myself clear when I stopped Angie before, I think the mayor may have stopped her as well in those kinds of issues. This, you know, the reason, and sorry, but I asked Mr. Brewster to be here was to provide that information, so everybody has information, because that's belongs in public. Now, what, how you analyze that or go into the jury room, that's, that's, you know, that's an entirely different, you know.
And to be clear, I think there's two different issues. Like I said, I think that we're finding clarity around, like, we're asking these important questions about the budget, and we're coming to understand, like, what that means, and providing, hopefully, that clarity for the public. Budgets are complicated, and so it's tough to understand, if you see, oh, there's an overage in this line item, does that mean that that caused the deficit? And then we say, no, that's not what caused the deficit, that could be really confusing. But I think that there's like a separate distinct issue, which has more to do with, like, performance conversations that should be held separately than from a budget conversation, which I feel like if people still have convers, like, questions about the budget conversation, we should have that now.
Yeah.
But I just feel us continuing to drift into that other conversation.
Yeah, and, and the HR question, I mean, I was happy to answer that. Yes, we have dealt with issues on those kinds of things, and there are advisories, and we can provide that kind of information, and I have been asked those kinds of questions, and I do help on the HR end of things, not so much on the budget, because I don't, I'm like everyone else, I have no idea how budgets work. Well, I kind of do, but, but, you know, actually, social relations, I ain't that good at either, but at the same time, it's, you know, those are issues that I deal with, and yes, we, you know, we address them, and there are, you know, always issues on those kinds of areas that you have to kind of be careful with. That's all.
Yeah, I think probably the HR concerns, that they drift into that, even the ones that weren't redacted, make me a little nervous about talking about them, so I think it would be good to do an executive session.
I move that we have an executive session to discuss the HR concerns that we can't bring out here.
Guys, you can't have an executive session to discuss HR concerns, that'd be very specific. An executive session to discuss the performance of your city manager, or to discuss the performance of a particular, maybe, department head, or for real estate reviews, or litigation, it can't be just for HR issues. There's very specific rules that involve the executive sessions, so.
I didn't want to put it on anybody in particular, but I will if I have to.
Why don't you, I hear you saying, if I were you, I would talk to Doug tomorrow, give him a call, say, I want to hold an, a, an executive session, then you can talk to me and say, yeah, we'll do it, or you got three city councils.
But we have to do it in a council meeting, so, so maybe, maybe I move that we do an executive session, one for the city manager and one for Finance Director, and we just do them both, get all the questions answered, so I can get this all off the table.
Excuse me, just so you know, we, you can't make a motion during a study session, but what you can do as, at a council is confer that you want the executive session, but you can't make a motion for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, maybe we should take a day, talk more to Doug about it, and then have a conversation, bring it, float the idea a little, let it ruminate, and then talk about it another time.
That's what Kim said, that we can float the idea, just don't make the decision on it.
No, I suggest again, that you speak, speak to Doug regarding what you want to do with regards to executive session, and then you can call me, and I'll say, yeah, okay, I can authorize an executive session, we'll do it, but I do really want you to go through the city attorney first.
Well, and we only need three counselors to call for an executive session.
Or you can do three counselors, or the mayor, or the, or the city manager, but if you talk to Doug tomorrow, and you say, hey, I want an executive session, based on Doug talking, or Doug usually calls, I'll just say, executive session, next city meeting.
How do counselors do that outside of this room?
Yeah, we have to do it in a meeting.
They, they would contact Erin, and made three of you contact Erin, say, we want an executive session, executive session happens, or I can authorize it, or Erin can authorize it, but Angie, if you want an executive session, I'm all game for it if it, if Doug and you have discussion.
Well, the, the other section of our HR concerns that are there, and some of the items that were redacted, are things that we need to speak about, and so those were redacted for an executive session. So, this was fact-finding to be able to call that.
So, it feels like we have a process now for figuring that out, if we want to move forward with that, we can. So, I would recommend that you come back to the, the budget conversation, see if there's any other, so let's leave those other issues on the table, okay? Whether that's staffing, or personnel, or HR, let them off the table for now, and come back to the budget conversation.
May I?
And questions? Yes, sir.
There's a number of things related to HR, it appears, that's in here, that's not redacted, and if we can answer those questions now, tonight, I'd much rather answer those questions than have a, an additional meeting.
Even though, you know, and I did see that there's certain violations and all of that.
That, that sounds good. Before we do that, I'll need a motion to extend the meeting. At, at nine o'clock, we need to extend the meeting for a half an hour. I need a motion to extend.
Motion to extend, I need to extend.
One second.
All in the favor?
Just to speak to it, I don't want to stay a little bit early for the night study, I think I could talk really earlier than we are.
Okay, me too.
Me too.
So, we'll handle those questions that you guys have, and then wrap it up. And just, one more, one more point of process. If we want to continue, we've had a number of study sessions regarding the budget, and I know some of us are getting exhausted by how many, they're good questions, and I appreciate the process, but if we're going to move forward with more questions and more sessions, we do need to have city council, by city council rules, approve more, more time and more resources spent on this particular issue. So, I'm hoping tonight we can wrap it up and have all our questions answered, and not continue with the study sessions and having staff at the time.
Right.
If we want to go further with that, we'll need council approval. With that said, why don't we go into the HR questions that you, you had, that some things were redacted, or whatever you want to do?
Yeah, and maybe you want to talk to Doug real quick and, and...
You want to sidebar with Doug for a second?
Uh, yeah, just, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, that's a good idea. So, why don't we just kind of stay seated and let you do your sidebar?
Oh, okay.
Just a process question.
Yes.
Maybe that, while that's happening, as soon as everybody is talking, I'll ask some more questions. So, okay.
Jim always has the cool shirt.
Y'all, can we keep it down?
He's a white boy.
I was just going to ask him, there was a thing, he said he wanted to contribute about, I think that one of the, the concepts is really difficult, for folks to understand, is how we got here to this place, with the general fund to begin with. And I wonder how many observations it got from the city, the block.
Wow. Yeah. This is what you're talking about. Yeah, I was, I was, but he, he was born early, and so his skin and throat was, you know, so it's a little bit of that, that's something to do with.
The general fund, this is our problem child, right? Yes, so, in the general fund, you've got 100, none of this must be. Oh, works. I don't know, it's just cut off, let's see. Over time, standby, oh, so this is public works?
Public works.
Out of the general fund, okay.
Out of the general fund, so that one's still open.
Yeah.
And it's still open.
Uh-huh.
And this one's administered, this is, I think you're talking about, for finance directors in the city, recorded corporate, so this one's under by 13 years, and personnel, you know, their own services.
Right.
I just look at this document and say, this from the street. It really doesn't matter.
Right.
This one's straight, and it's...
Exactly.
This one's really wide, you know, work on your own personnel, and I can't tell unless it was a, this one is planned. Planned and planned.
Right. Right. do we get to a position that still have a, a short period, and what can I try to explain why revenue is disperated?
You know what?
You're looking at, this is your typical, like, carryover, 1.9, 2.4, 3.1, city, or against city, that made our carryover was going down, that, we planned off, not get into wire, you know.
Right, and so there wouldn't be carryover the next year, and there wouldn't be new revenues either, so.
In 1920, we had $2 million in revenue, and 2.2 million, so we have a $200,000 problem.
This, this is what we need to go over, would you mind maybe talking about this, if I ask the question, we can get everybody together? Again, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So, Angie, you ready?
Um, yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and re-adjourn the meeting, and Angie with her questions. Thank you for asking the sidebar, I appreciate that.
I guess, yeah, I hate this. It's not my favorite thing to do tonight.
You're doing great.
Thank you. I'm going to go down to page 118. Item F, item G on page 118. Some of that is redacted, but it says, previous staff member spoke to Councilor Warren about hostile work environment created after she filed a grievance because of her experience with HR director. with HR Director. H says, at least three previous employees report a hostile work environment due to HR Director. Has anyone else reported a hostile work environment to verbally or written because of Finance Director's actions?
I received one. One person asked me whether or not I would consider an action bullying or hostile work environment, but it was not against the Finance Director, it was against a different staff member. I'm not aware of anyone that's filed a grievance at the management level, anyway, and those would typically come to me, except one employee who did file one very recently, and an investigation was done, and it was not substantiated, it was not about a hostile work environment, however.
So you haven't been told verbally or written of...
About a hostile work environment?
About any problems?
There have been personality conflicts with almost all of the staff that I see on a daily basis, and I think that that's somewhat normal, that in a working environment where you're spending roughly ten hours a day, that there are personality conflicts. So since I've been there, there have definitely been personality conflicts. But I've only received one that I can remember of someone citing hostile work environment. And again, that wasn't against the Finance Director, that was against another employee. So the three previous employees reporting a hostile work environment, I'm not aware of that. It wasn't reported to me that way.
Also, there's a question on bully violations. There, have you had in the last, I guess, in your tenure that you've been here, has there been any bully violations that you know of?
I checked the Bully website, because I wasn't aware of any, and they have a digest. And I'm not a hundred percent sure how that digest worked, but didn't have a lot of time to respond to these, or to do any research on this. These questions came in about a week after we had asked for the final date. So anyway, when I did a public, what I would call a public records search on my own, I didn't see any bully violations against the city of Phoenix.
But potential bully violations?
There have been potential bully violations.
Or alleged.
Right, that's probably a better way to put it, because it's my understanding that they're, when they're settled, that they're included in the online digest. And again, I did a search and couldn't find any substantiated bully violations against the city of Phoenix, ever.
But in your purview, you know of a couple?
I don't know of anyone that's filed a bully complaint.
Well, not a potential bully violation, a risk for the city.
Uh, yeah, there have been, there have been instances where someone could have filed a complaint, but I don't think that it would have been substantiated.
Well, one you would, because we have that email.
So just to say, the document says, there are at least two counts of bullying violations which would result in finding the city, but...
There are none.
They're redacted.
But that there are none, so I just want to make sure to the public that that's not a mistake.
Yeah, it's what's redacted in the top, that that is referring to. It's redacted for executive session.
I didn't do a formal public records request for bullying. I did a search on their website, where it's my understanding they listed them all, and I couldn't find any bullying violations against the city of Phoenix.
Yeah, the ones I'm speaking of are potential, not filed.
If I may ask some more questions about those, about the personality conflicts?
Yeah.
In City Hall? I've been told, right, naturally, this is from past employees, so I don't have any way to substantiate it, but there's been reports of screaming and yelling within City Hall. Have you witnessed any of that?
I have witnessed at least two employees that raised their voice.
And just for my own well-being, what kind of actions do you take in that case?
I counsel on their communication.
Right.
Yeah, and this is an internal thing, but I keep a log of when people have a, what I would call a coaching meeting, and I have, I have at least two employees that I coached on communications staff.
Would one of those be HR Director?
I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss individual employees in a public meeting.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, except for we're discussing that in our HR issues, but...
And then you just talked to Doug, is this not more appropriate for an executive session?
Well, asking, that was not appropriate, but I mean, asking questions about whether or not there was a bully violation, it's public record, and it's something that you can, you know, find out whether or not there's bullying allegations.
But in our city, we're such a small city, when you say, you know...
Bureau of Labor and Misrisky.
So just be careful, because it's the same thing, you know, it's only one person in an apartment, you know that that's the person who's crying.
Yes, well, because we're talking about HR concerns, that would be the only person?
True.
Yeah.
What would you describe the overall attitude of employees towards each other in City Hall this, right now? Do you think, would you describe it friendly, would you describe it as some animosity between individuals?
I think that most employees get along really well. I know that a number of the employees even hang out after work, they put lunch together. You know, someone, this is a benign, simple example, but if someone's going to Dutch Brothers, they check and see whether or not other people want something. So I would say that for the most part, employees are exactly as you would expect in any other organization. They're friendly, most of them are there to get the job done, and some of them, you know, are actually friends.
Again, if employees are coming to City Councils and complaining about the work environment, are they sure you're directing to the proper person?
I have one more question for...
I'll give you an example of what we didn't ask. We have a weekly staff meeting, and we all talk about what we did this weekend, and it seemed like everybody appreciated, appreciated that. You know, that's the sort of thing that happens probably more often than not. So I would say that it's what do we expect in an executive session?
How I got to these questions was partly looking at the shortfall in the budget, but partly some of the resistance that you gave me to asking for the information that I asked for, for the schedule of raises. The dates and amounts of raises for the last two years, asking for actuals, there was resistance, and that didn't come, it didn't come quickly, and so that, part of that made me concerned for what I was digging through, and so that was a concern of mine as well. And one more for Mr. Brewster, a little on the budget, did you find any numbers that didn't, that didn't match up? I know when I was looking from document to document, that the numbers changed, sometimes by a hundred, sometimes by a thousand, I didn't find any numbers that matched, except for one, in a, in a, the chief of police's salary. Is that normal, the numbers from one document to another, switches all around?
I think the human element, if you're going from an L B form to a budgetary software that presents budget and actual, you could accidentally, you know, miss something. I think we raised several things that were different, and sometimes it really wasn't different, because you made some resolutions to move the money, so.
Okay, okay, yeah, but some of the, like, Schedule A and B, where the numbers were different for our salaries that were given, Schedule A was given two days after Schedule B, and the salaries were changed, the numbers were changed a little bit, depending maybe on what document. Did you, did you see any problems at all in the budget? It all looked great?
I didn't spend that much time, but I didn't have any concerns.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you say that Mr. Brewster is, I mean, the fourth or fifth independent analyzer of our budgetary process? And the public, now, just a small portion of the public, keep coming back like it's conspiracy theory here in the City Hall. But he has no active run, Dave Kanter has no active run, say, his insurance, I know it's active run, or public guard is an active run, they all find nothing wrong, nothing. But we can't go back to this, we can't take memos from Dean McCloskey in there, and people have kind of odd questions by home, and people on Facebook, or people, constituents will look at it and say, if someone starts complaining about the auditary process or conspiracy theories, at some point they'll say, well, I've had enough, I don't want to hear about it anymore. So, again, CIS, the auditors, Dave Kanter, Mr. Brewster, found no glaring abnormalities or red flags, or conspiracy theories, misappropriations, lack of checks and balances, it isn't there, folks. Hasn't been there, it is not there, and I hope at some point we...
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to hear Mr. Brewster, so I have one more question that he thinks. So if it wasn't like misappropriations, and it wasn't like overspending that got us into this situation, then can you help to explain why our general fund has an issue right now? Why it's depleted, and what we can do?
Yeah, I think that historically, if you look back at the last three audits, you'll see that you keep spending some of your carryforward balance, which means expenditures exceed revenues, and you're spending your cash. You've watched it year after year go down, 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 and now it's to the critical point that you can't let it continue to do that. So I don't know that there's any particular spending, it may have been capital projects, it may have been something within the general fund, staffing personnel level that you can't afford, you know, it could be anything, but it's a little bit at a time, you know? So I'm just saying, yes, you're staying within the budget.
As I've said before, I said the budgetary meeting is that our costs for employees are growing up much faster than the amount of money we have coming in. We have, our tax is about three percent per year, we have no development, very little development going on in the city. If you look at Central Point, Metford, other cities, there's a lot of development going on, and more revenue coming in. In Phoenix, we're constrained by our borders and our lack of investment going on, our lack of developments. And our employee expenses have been going up faster and faster every single year than the three percent tax we have coming in. And that trajectory is there, there's not much that we can do about it, and that's what I think is a major problem we have in the city. Higher employee wages, employee expenses going up higher than our revenue, and having no new development to get access from.
Yes, and when you address it, you know, I audit a lot of fire districts, and fire districts, seventy percent of their expenditure is personnel. And if you look at your, your revenue goes up three percent, plus new construction, and your expenditures, which are seventy percent personnel, that have five percent purse increases and health insurance increases, workers' comp increases, and your personnel costs are going to blow by an increase in revenues.
Our purse is a forty-five thousand dollars this year.
Correct.
What do I say?
So I think one of the things I would task you at is look at your affordable personnel, and make the hard decisions, and say, what can we afford, what service level can we afford to provide? And that's the discussion, because you're watching the cash go away, and it can't go away much farther.
You mentioned that payroll was at fifty-two percent of the budget, what is recommended, what do you think is a recommended amount?
Every organization is different, but most of what you offer is services to the public, you know, whether it be water, or streets, or planning, or building, anything administrative, but all of those are people, and so there is no optimum...
Is it, yeah.
Just looking at personnel issues, that's an indication, I see this all the time, is you have people that are working as hard as they can work, and are being stressed because the workload's higher than they have time to...
Yeah.
So it becomes an issue for retention and training, and, you know, all that.
True.
And that turnover is huge.
Huge, Jonah. So thirty, forty, what, do you know what average city percentage of...
No, I just know, my...
That one's high?
Yeah, I don't know, it's high. I think it may be normal.
That more than a half, it's like sixty percent of our general fund is going to just the police.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which is like, that's a lot.
A lot, yes.
So it's less, what do we have now, under our new budget, we've cut two and a half staff positions, and so we sold ten police, and then however many city staff that we've left over. So we, you know, we are trimming back city staff, and that's going to have an impact on City Hall and the services that we provide. And I always hate to see people lose their jobs, anything that, you know, one of the conversations that we had in the budget meeting was that if we don't do something about the revenue shortfall, we have to cut police officers. And, I mean, that's still maybe something we have to look at in future budgets, is cutting police officers, and that's something that everybody should think about, and think about, like...
And there's other options with furlough days, and maybe a pay cut, there's other options that we haven't really delved into, we just jumped into that.
Like step freezes for administrative staff, but then some of our staff are unionized, and some of them aren't, right?
Yes, for departments.
So for unionized staff, then that has to go through union negotiations, and we have less of a say over that. We can talk about executive level staff and say, okay, we're going to do step freezes, right, which we have done in the upcoming budget, but we can't do that with unionized folks, because unions aren't powerful, and that's...
Yeah, we can't do that, yes. Mr. Brewster, do you know how often a statement was made that did not compare expenditures with revenue, is that something that would be done monthly, would that...
We would compare revenues and expenditures every month.
Every month?
The longer you look, the more accurate it is, you know, if you're looking at six months, it's more accurate than one month, because you have discrepancies in a month.
So it'd need to be done monthly?
Yeah, we always look at, when you're looking at the budget process, you're starting about February, guessing what June, July will look like, you know? But you need as many months of actual information to be able to see, how good is your guess? It's always a guess.
Yeah, but, so each month should be done, not...
Each month, look at a quarter, look at six months, look at nine months.
All the way through, okay. I know there was a statement that that wasn't done.
One thing you could do, which I kind of liked seeing in the budget, was the projected maybe...
Yes.
So we used to have, you know, the projected, there's a projection out to July, or June thirtieth, as to what the final number would be in the budget, and that was in our budgets in the past. I thought you were right here, putting that back in the budgetary process.
It really helps, I wouldn't have had to dig so much if I'd had that. And also, maybe like council's opinion on going back to the old style of budget, the new budget format, it's very hard to gather information, now everybody's grouped into one, so if we were able to go back to the old budget format with the...
Estimated format.
Yes, with the estimated actuals in there would really help in looking at information, yes.
Yeah, the estimated actual is really kind of a forecast, you have nine months' actual, and you're guessing what the last three months are, so you're forecasting what the end of the year will look like in the twelve months.
It's a very helpful tool for...
It's helpful, but the question came up, what's estimated actual, you know? But it's really a forecast of finishing the year.
And you have a reoccurring month of actuals every month, so you would, it would not be hard at nine, ten months to have that number, okay.
Good guess.
Yeah, that was told to me different as well.
Mm-hmm.
More questions? Well, I hope we find this.
I do, maybe adding to agenda item to speak about bringing those actuals, so we can, and I know we addressed that a little bit earlier, that we can look monthly at the actuals that are spent.
I think the monthly, the monthly... I would provide that to you, it seems like that was a conversation that you and I had via email, that would be provided to you on a monthly basis.
Yes, that you told me a few months ago that there was no such thing, so it's hard to find where.
Like I said, it will be updated in September, so we should be able to provide that.
You told me I could have it in December, and that there was no running total, that I was mistaken on that one, but, so, anyway.
We will start getting monthly numbers.
You get, you started getting monthly numbers already, but what I'd like to do is also provide the revenue and expense report on a monthly basis.
Yeah, that's...
And those other numbers that you talked about are based on, and if you receive those on a monthly basis, I think all of your, like, the actuals... I think all of your budget actual questions could be answered, not all, but most of your budget actual questions could be answered when you see that report.
I, I do appreciate the narrative that comes along with that, too.
We'll continue to provide that monthly finance report, but also the expenses.
More questions?
I, I thank you, Richard, for all your information.
Thank you for your time, yeah.
I'm a new counselor as of January, and so digging through that and, and finding that, your information is very helpful.
Thank you. Glad to help.
With that said, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thanks.